End of the Bismarck School Board. It's 5:15 on Monday, October 13th. I call this meeting to order. Welcome to those of you who are joining us both here and also online. You can find our agenda and follow along online under the School Board tab at bismarckschools.org. First item of business, roll call, Dr. Scher.
Mr. Hager?
Here.
Mr. Eastgate?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Preskey?
Here.
Dr. Fosnot, would you lead us in the pledge?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1C, BPS, mission, vision, and values. The BPS mission is to empower every learner to thrive. The BPS vision states, together, our strong relationships build inclusive, collaborative, and innovative environments that create agency and inspire a passion for learning, excellent discovery. BPS values are inclusion, excellence, innovation, and leadership. You'll also find a link in the agenda to the BPS strategic plan. Item two is to adopt the agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Dr. Scher.
Eastgate?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preskey?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes. That brings us to item three, focus on success. Dr. Fosnot, do you want to do introductions?
I will. I'll do introductions. But first of all, good afternoon, board members. Nice to see you. Tonight, we have Lauren Oster as the city planner for the City of Bismarck's Community Development Department here with us tonight to talk about their city's arts and culture plan. As was in the instructions today, she's going to present the plan and provide information, provide a time for you to ask questions. And then, if you could, she's seeking your feedback, the district's feedback, on the plan. So if you have input, thoughts, what you'd like to share, please email that to me before Friday because I'm going to compile that into one response for BPS and then send it to Ms. Oster. So, welcome.
Good evening, President and other board members. I appreciate you having me here tonight. As Dr. Fosnot provided, I'm here to provide a brief overview of the City of Bismarck Arts and Culture Master Plan, and we'll be asking for final input from this board. The Arts and Culture Master Plan aims to develop a community-driven vision for the role that arts and culture plays in the community. To achieve this initiative, the City of Bismarck partnered with Dakota West Arts Council, Bismarck Parks and Recreation District, and Bismarck Public Schools. We contracted with designing local and nationally recognized firms specializing in arts and culture planning to help with the community engagement as well as the plan's creation. There are five chapters to the plan, and can I get the next slide, please? Thank you. So the first chapter just provides an overview of the plan. So just a little bit of background. In 2022, the City of Bismarck was awarded an R-Town grant from the National Endowment for the Arts to create an arts and culture plan for Bismarck. The effort to create this plan stemmed from several factors, including the city's 2019 strategic plan, which included an objective to create a vibrant local arts community, additional series of community arts conversations among artists, performers, cultural bearers, and arts administrators in 2022, as well as the creation of Bismarck's 20, or Together 2045 Comprehensive Plan in 2022. The chapter just describes what an arts and culture plan is, what it should do for a community, and identifies key project partners, which include Bismarck Public Schools. Can I get the next slide, please? Thank you. So the next chapter of the plan had multiple opportunities identified here that include different engagement aspects that were part of this plan. So there were 23 one-on-one stakeholder interviews with representatives from the arts and culture organizations in the community, and those also included members from Bismarck Public Schools for those. There were six small focus group conversations, including one specifically with arts educators, non-scientific online survey, just to gather the community's arts and culture-related preferences, and then a public workshop with members of the community. Can I, thank you. So from those different engagement opportunities, several occurring, reoccurring themes emerged from that. So there's four on the left here, opportunities for the arts and culture, barriers to experiencing the arts, cultural programming opportunities, and desires for out, or for planned outcomes. These were then compiled into a series of values that could be used to guide the development of the plan recommendations. Those values are included on the right there, so sense of place and identity, community building and connection, personal expression and creativity, and educational enrichment and development. Can I get the next slide, please? Thank you. So typically with plans like this, it helps to have a way to gauge the relative success of the efforts that you are implementing. So part of that was including a comparison with peer cities to Bismarck. This is just a quick graph from the plan, but that chapter goes more in depth than that. Can I get the next slide? So the fourth chapter provides an introduction to various ways the arts can present themselves for the community. It highlights multiple examples under four main areas, so the visual arts, public arts, performing arts, and literary arts, and they provide multiple examples within that. Can I get the next slide, please? So this is the main component of the plan. This is where you're going to see the recommendations. It provides multiple strategies to implement the overarching plan recommendations. It's laid out in a now, soon, next framework, providing different flexible strategy, or strategic timelines. It prioritizes projects and foundational elements so that future investments can best leverage the momentum and increased capacity built through the prior phases of the plan. It also includes different funding opportunities, as well as arts activation and discovery opportunities that relate to certain strategies identified in that area. Can I get the next slide? Thank you. So how could this plan relate to and support Bismarck Public Schools? I have a couple strategies on here, and those ones are more related to how arts education and programming is called out specifically in the plan. And through those various strategies that are called out here, it could support specific drivers of excellence that are called out within your strategic plan. For example, Strategy 2.6, which is related to an artist-in-residency program, could support nurturing well-rounded individuals through inclusion and extracurricular opportunities, which is part of the personal excellence driver of your strategic plan. I just want to note that the strategies called out here highlight the potential collaboration opportunities. However, there are no way forcing or pushing Bismarck Public Schools to do anything. It's just an opportunity for collaboration between our two organizations. At this time, I'll ask for any questions that you may have.
Board members, questions, comments? Mr. Eastgate?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Looking at like, for instance, the action plan, I guess the question that would maybe pertain most to BPS, underneath the action plan, arts activation and discovery opportunities, are there, are there a lot of opportunities for maybe BPS students to be involved in some of the different art projects that might be going on, and what would those look like?
I think with those arts activations that you're referring to in the back of the plan, and specifically, I believe, 2.1B for that strategy, where it would more likely relate to Bismarck Public Schools, there would be an opportunity for collaboration. You know, if Bismarck Public Schools is doing their own activities, there could be an opportunity for other nonprofits or other organizations within the community to collaborate with Bismarck Public Schools. The point of having those called out and identifying those potential project partners for that is not only for the City of Bismarck to implement those activities, but other organizations, and to make it easier for, say, Bismarck Public Schools, if they're doing something, to already have an idea of where they can look for those connections.
Okay. Awesome. Well, thank you very much. Yeah, the art and culture, you know, obviously, the more we can get that in the community, the more vibrant it makes Bismarck and Bismarck Mandan. So appreciate you guys' work with this and the work of the artists that'll be doing it as well.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you, President Hager. Yeah, thanks for this report. It's great. There's a, there's a lot to digest, right? Just wondering if you could, and maybe this isn't fair, but could you, could you maybe speak to the impact? Like in a Rapid City, it says the arts impact is 204 million, where it's 58.1 million in Bismarck. What separates them from us? What are they doing that we're not doing? Or I assume we're trying to get to catch up to that level. Is that correct?
Thank you for that, Board Member Lee. So you are correct. They are doing some things that we aren't. I believe they do currently have an arts and culture plan in place. It does help a lot more with that connection and collaboration opportunity for the organizations within their community. I believe they're also more active, I want to say, on, on the non-public sector as well, or at least they're more openly active in that sense. Beyond that, I can't say further than that, but hopefully with this plan here, we'll be able to start jump-driving that forward, so.
So I would assume that impact is the economic impact on the city as a whole, right? The money it brings in, the events, that type of thing?
That is correct, yes.
That's awesome. Yeah, thank you so much.
Ms. Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, President Hager. And then Board Member Lee, to build off the question that you just asked, are you also presenting at any of the other political subgroups? And what will that, are you looking for that same type of feedback kind of from various entities?
Thank you for that question, Board Member Peterson. Yes. So tomorrow, we are, I will be presenting to the City Commission on this. We will be looking for adoption at the end of the month, not at tomorrow's meeting. And then we are presenting on Thursday as well to the Park Board. They are another key member. Dakota West Arts Council has been heavily involved with this. I believe they'll be speaking a little bit tomorrow night as well at City Commission.
And then just one other follow-up. What, if we're going to provide feedback and things like that, and, you know, to Dr. Fosnot, what are, what are the things that you're looking for the most in terms of us, like, kind of looking through it, looking for collaboration, partnership edits? What are you, what do you want us to kind of like gear towards as we, as we look through it and, and really think through? Obviously, we have lots, we have some participants on the steering committee that I see from school representation, so I appreciate that. But from a board perspective, what would you like to see from our feedback?
Thank you again for that. So what we would be looking for overarching is, is there any way, or if it's currently in here, that this in some way could support your organization? If it's not currently doing that, and if there's an opportunity for us to adjust it to better support you in your endeavors, that would be a great comment to include in there, as well as if you notice any other potential partnering opportunities that aren't specifically called out right now, that would be another opportunity for a comment there.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you taking the time to come and present today.
Thank you very much.
Brings us to item four on the agenda, which is public comment. The board recognizes the central role parents play in the education of their children and supports active parent involvement in the education process. The board's practice of public comment reflects and aligns with policy BCBA and the spirit of its intent. For classroom issues, it's best to follow the chain of command, teacher, principal, assistant, superintendent, superintendent. For district issues, please reach out to Dr. Fosnot. If you do speak tonight, we simply ask that you be responsible, be helpful, and be respectful. Our BPS students deserve to have adults model the expectations that we have for them. Groups urge to select one spokesperson. Individuals will be limited no more than four minutes and will be notified with 30 seconds remaining to conclude their remarks. The board will not debate issues as presented, but will take such matters under advisement. With that, please stand and approach the podium if you would like to speak tonight. Okay, seeing nobody, public comment is closed. Down to item five, monitoring district operations, OE7, asset protection. Dr. Scher.
Thank you, President Hager, members of the board. Tonight, we report on OE7. This is one of those that we always talk about that we consider evergreen, right? Do this, make sure we got this. We don't want to even think about it, right? So we can focus on the things that we should be. So that's really what this is. Unfortunately, 7.4 indicator two, we did have a, we had a couple issues this past year. So one of them, I feel like is, was a little bit out of our hand. It was the national power school data breach that we just had to work through. And the other one was, it was internal error, human error on our part. And I will say that we have put correction, corrective action plans in place. I would hope that it wouldn't happen again. We've made lots of steps, and we are going to a new student information system that's going to help drive maybe even some additional coverages that maybe we didn't have before. Just overarching on OE7, I'll answer your questions that the board has, but essentially, it's, it's kind of, we always balance our risk for the district. So this is a lot about the protections we have in place and all that. So we don't have any recommended changes to the coverages we currently have in our district. So with that, I would answer any questions that the, the board may have related to OE7 asset protection.
Board members, questions? Mr. Eastgate?
Thanks, President Hager. No questions, Dr. Scher, necessarily, but as taking over the operational excellence portfolio this year, just wanted to point out some of the things that were talked about from us. And I certainly think we're in compliance, but I think it's just important to note for everybody that on some of the, the other work that goes on before we get to the school board meeting, right, is that the long-term facility plan that we have in place as well, and that we all know, we've had principals in here to discuss in the past, and that although 7.5 talks about allowing facilities and equipment, you know, that we have sufficient maintenance, and I think we do have sufficient maintenance, that we have an, we are a big district, and we have ongoing needs that go on, just like people doing their own homes. And so just to kind of bring that up, that although I believe we're sufficient, I think we're in compliance. So thanks, Dr. Scher, for noting that. I'm sure we have all the evidence we need for behind that. But at the same time, just, I want to continue to put that in front of our board to know that, that, you know, at some point, we're going to have to do some more things to keep our buildings where we need to keep them because it's just an ongoing deal. And when we talked about the budget earlier this year, Dr. Fosnot provided the, the visual of the dollar, right, and how far we can stretch that dollar. And so I just think that that's one of those things, just to be, for the community to continue to know about, that we need to make sure that we're at least discussing the fact that our, we need to make sure we're keeping these facilities here so we can stay in the green, right, so that we're in compliance. So, thank you, Dr. Scher.
Thank you, Mr. Eastgate. Great, thanks, Dr. Scher. With that, I, oh, Mr. Lee?
President Hager, I would, with respect to OE7 asset protection, I would move that we accept the report as fully compliant.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Dr. Scher.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preskey?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes. That brings us down to item B, GC4, officers' roles. So this will be the public reading of GC4 officers' roles. The officers of the board are those listed in this policy. Their duties are those assigned by this policy and others required by law. President, the president provides leadership to, to the board, ensures the faithful execution of the board's processes, exercises interpretive responsibility with integrity, reflecting the spirit and intent of the board's policies, and normally serves as the board's official spokesperson. The president has the following specific authority and duties. One, monitor board actions to ensure that they are consistent with the board's own rules and policies and with other obligations imposed by agencies whose authority supersedes the board's own authority. A, conduct and monitor board meetings deliberations to assure the board's discussions and attention are focused on board issues as defined in board policy. B, assure the board meetings discussions are productive, efficient, and orderly. C, chair board meetings using the authority normally vested in the chair as described in Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised. D, lead timely board meeting debriefings and periodic self-assessments to ensure continuous process improvements. Two, assure the compliance of the board's summative evaluation of the superintendent. Three, represent the board as its official spokesperson about issues decided by the board and other matters related to official board business. Four, execute all documents authorized by the board, except as otherwise provided by law. Five, on behalf of the board and in concert with the superintendent, develop proposed board meeting agendas consistent with the board's annual calendar. Six, make all interpretive decisions of the board policy in governance, culture, and the board superintendent relationship sections using reasonable judgment. The president is not authorized to, A, make interpretive decisions about policies created by the board in the results and operations expectations policy areas. Interpretation of these policies is the responsibility of the superintendent. B, exercise any authority as the individual to supervise or direct the superintendent. C, serve as a barrier between the superintendent and the board. Vice president. The vice president's role shall serve as president in the event of the president's absence or inability to perform the duties. This concludes the reading of GC4 officers' roles. Mr. Lee?
President Hager, I would move that we retain GC4 officers' roles.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Dr. Scher.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preskey?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
I would also move that we are in compliance of GC4 officers' roles.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Dr. Scher.
Preskey?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item six, matters reserved for board action. R3 behaviors revision. Dr. Fosnot, you had a question you wanted to address?
I, I will just add too, before I hand this over, this is a, a policy and indicators that we talked about last year, bringing forth some recommendations. My apologies, it took us a little longer to get those in front of you, but that we have them before you tonight. And because, Mr. Bernhardt, this is a large cross-section of his portfolio of work, I'm going to let him present. He's asked to present from his desk tonight, so we're going to let the camera swivel around and catch him over there because he's going to be running the slides and, and giving your, you the, the insights of why we're recommending those changes. So, Mr. Bernhardt.
Thank you, Dr. Fosnot. Good evening, President Hager and, and board members. Tonight, I would like to share considerations for R3, personal development. The first document you have linked is the R3 policy. If we can get that on the screen, please. You'll see the two indicators, 3.1, manage his or her behavior appropriately, and 3.2, resolve interpersonal conflict. The next document that we have for you tonight to review, and we'll all spend most of the time just discussing with the board and those at home, is the redlined indicators. I will share our rationale for the proposed changes you and our community will see and hear tonight. In addition, the proposed changes were also vetted through the Personal Excellence Committee. Overall, the proposed changes before you intend to better align our reporting with our data collection practices system-wide. Continuous growth and improvement are better tracked through analyzing data around students who meet intended targets. The changes before you reframe indicators to better align with that practice. And so with our first edit or consideration is underneath the superintendent interpretation, 3.1. As you can see, we removed "and" and, and included the word "including." This change improves readability and makes it clear that respect across differences is not separate, but part of how we define respectful interactions. Moving past our definitions down into the indicators, superintendent indicators of compliance, indicator one, respect. This edit removes the fixed 85% goal and instead refers to an identified target. This provides flexibility to adjust targets over time if the board chooses without revising policy. The intent remains that a high percentage of students would demonstrate respect, but the specific benchmark will be set in monitoring reports, and I'll share that with you in the next attachment. Going through with indicator two, the expectation remains that 100% of students refrain from bullying. No recommended changes at this time. Indicator three, under major infractions, this change reframes the indicator to report students without major infractions. It emphasizes overall system health and aligns with our PBIS, MTSS systems by highlighting the success of majority while still allowing us to monitor and support the smaller group who struggle. The language addresses the affirmative, and some examples of major infractions, alcohol, drugs, tobacco, physical aggression, bullying, harassment, vandalism of weapons fall underneath that category for those at home. Underneath indicator four, indicator four now reports the percentage of students without suspensions instead of those with suspensions. This aligns with our affirmative framing approach and gives a board a clearer sense of system health. It shows how many students make healthy choices while also recommending to us, reminding us that avoiding OSS and ISS doesn't capture all aspects of success. It specifically reflects discipline data. This revision to the indicator now captures in and out-of-school suspensions together, and they are both considered disciplinary removals, and both are captured through our state reporting as well. Indicator five then rolls up into indicator four, and that indicator five is the out-of-school suspension. So those both roll up into indicator four. And then the new indicator five, restraint and seclusion. Our recommendation is for the board to consider, the focus remains on tracking restraint and seclusion as its own indicator, showing that nearly all students manage behavior without needing these interventions. We wanted to make sure that we included our restraint and seclusion data, although it has typically been around 1% of our overall incident data. Students who are supported by restraint and seclusion are afforded Tier 3 supports, which includes individualized plans and strategies to support each student. You will see with the next attached document, an overall chart that has been added for your consideration to show percent of students with no incidents. In addition, we have kept the same data collection as we've had in years past with reporting. And then the final indicator, a recommendation for expulsions to be removed since they are very rare and governed by law, so they don't provide meaningful reflection regarding the health or system progress. Our recommendation for the board will be to focus on more actionable measures like Tier 3 supports and equity in discipline. Moving on to the second indicator within the policy, 3.2, again scrolling down underneath the definitions. Indicator one, conflict management. This edit simplifies the language so that the indicator clearly tracks whether students resolve conflict without major infractions. Areas that are flagged that fall into the area of conflict with others resulting in major infractions are assault, threats, bullying, and harassment, to provide examples. As you will see, overall, our students do a really good job in this area, and you'll see that in the upcoming monitoring report that I'll show you here in just a moment. Indicator two, under 3.2, Tier 1 behavior. This edit shortens the wording but keeps the goal the same, tracking how many students are supported successfully at Tier 1. These results or outputs are a clear indicator of the work in OE10, which is reported out in May. And those, that report talks about the inputs to our system. And then the final indicator, three, is a student survey. No edits were made here. The survey measure remains the same with the survey question of, I interact with others in safe ways. And so moving into the redline monitoring report, just to walk the board and those at home that are listening. at home that are listening, what this potentially could look like. The beginning of the report obviously looks the same, moving into the data analysis overarching of what is happening within this report, and then going to start here with three point one and looking at, again, students will show continuous improvement or toward attained target, removing that eighty-five percent. Students meeting expectations in each grade level assessed on the progress report in the area of respect. And you'll be able to see the rubric for respect for both elementary and middle school in the appendix at the end of this document as well, just for your reference. But as you can see, we would have an overarching goal for K five. Recommendation would be the eighty-five percent, which I believe we've used in the past, as well as an overarching goal for middle school, six through eight. But then you'd also be able to see the individual grade levels as well. Moving into indicator two, again, there were no recommended changes for bullying, so we would report out as we have in the past. Indicator three, cleaning up some of the language, and again with the affirmative, students without major infractions. And as you scroll down into the graph, all three graphs, you'll see that that second column would be eliminated. It's redundant. Each graphic already has a heading, elementary, middle school, and high school. And again, just to bring to your attention, this graphic and the percentages here are students without incidents, and the target would be, recommendation would be eighty-five percent. And again, looking at our MTSS systems, when you think about capturing a good, healthy system, you're looking at that eighty to eighty-five, and so eighty-five is at the upper end of a tier-one, a good, solid tier-one program. Indicator four, the percentage of students without an in-school or out-of-school suspension, again rolling those into one is our recommendation. And so you'd see the elementary here, again, that second column is redundant, pull that out. And then the target for elementary, recommendation would be at ninety-five percent. And then you see the total number of students percent without incidents. Moving into the middle school, our target would be ninety percent, total students percent without incidents. And the feeling there was that there is a huge challenge when you have elementary kids rolling up into the middle school. You have students that coming from schools of a little over a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, and they come into these large middle schools of eleven hundred to twelve hundred. The environment is absolutely different. There are many different things for middle school students to navigate, as well as the number of teachers and expectations that each teacher has at the middle school level two. Moving down into high school, target would be the same as elementary, ninety-five percent, again, students without incident. And then continuing on to that indicator five, which we had recommended to remove because that'd all be captured into indicator four. And then restraint and seclusion with the new indicator five, again, we would keep the overall data that we've reported out in the past. The change or the recommended change would be the graphic at the top of that report, where it'd show the school year, again, the target, as we said, about one percent of our total incidents result in restraint and seclusion. So the total number of students you see within the district, percent of students with no incidents, and then a number with an incident involving restraint and seclusion. And some of these are just plug numbers, just to give you an idea of what that would look like. This hasn't been updated yet. And again, the graphs that we've had in the past for restraint and seclusion, so we kept that whole. And then down to indicator seven, which our recommendation would be to eliminate indicator seven with the board's approval of incidents of expulsion. And then three point two, indicator one, again, the affirmative, percentage of students without conflicts with others resulting in major infractions. And you'll see the graphic down below of what that would potentially look like, school year, target, total students percent without incidents, and that target is at ninety-five percent. And that ninety-five percent would be solid across those at middle school, high school as well. Indicator two, tier-one, level of behavior, some edits there just to clean up some of the language, but then the reporting graphs would look very similar to what we've had and shared up at top. Eliminate that second column, target eighty-five percent, total number of students, percent of tier-one students. And you can see some of the data that we've had in the past that were far exceeding that target of eighty-five percent, which I had already mentioned, when you look at the MTSS systems, eighty to eighty-five percent with a really well-oiled machine or a healthy system should fall within that percentage to capture our tier-one students, and we're on the upper end of that at eighty-five percent. And that would remain the same for middle school and high school. And then indicator three is the survey, I interact with others in safe ways. An overarching goal of grades three through twelve, because third grade is the first year that they take that survey, and then you have your bands that would break that data out as well. And then in conclusion, the appendix is, are listed here as well, as far as our rubrics And in this packet here, we also have the clean indicators to give you an idea of what that clean monitoring report would look like too, if you'd like me to go through that. But I think you get the point and the idea of what our recommendations are for the board. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. Board members, any questions, comments? Ms. Peterson.
I just have one question. I know, first of all, thank you for all of the work on this. I think the intent, when we've looked at any of these monitoring reports, the hope was that we were still collecting data that aligned to kind of the intent and the spirit of the policy and make sure that we see results and we see longitudinal data, but that also that it would ease the reporting burden on the side of the administration. And then I liked the wording that kind of went into the affirmative. So my question to you, Mr. Barnhart, is just like, do you feel like, I mean, with those recommendations, obviously it was a lot of work putting those together. Did you feel like even when you, you know, this report will come out in November or whatever, is it going to make it easier for you and your team to put this? And I don't want to say easier as if, you know, but more intentional to put the data together. Do you feel like it's serving you well, or do you feel like there's, you know, still additional reporting burden that you have?
No, I appreciate the question, Board Member Peterson. I think especially in out-of-school and in-school suspensions, when you combine those, because that's a removal of the classroom, no matter which way you slice it. And I think it would really help the board as well as our public to be able to see how much time kids are spending outside the classroom, whether it's out-of-school suspension or in-school suspension. So I think it's clear for stakeholders by far. And then just the conversations that Dr. Johnson and Mrs. Nelson that I've had, going back and aligning things in the affirmative practice that we use with MTSS, and those benchmarks or our targets is eighty-five percent, I feel like that's more aligned than what it has been in the past, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. Seeing no other questions or comments, Ms. Eastgate.
Thank you, President Hager. With that, I would motion that we approve the revised coherent governance results policy, R three, personal development behavior, and the revised supporting indicators as presented for first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment? Mr. Lee? No? Okay. Dr. Scher, if you could call the roll, please.
Eastgate.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Preski.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes. Item B, OE four, got a little ahead of myself. This is where you had the question to...
That's all right, Chairman Hager. And I will say, I do appreciate the work Mr. Barnhart's team's done on this. They did a lot of work to get the last one ready. So OE four, I know it's up for second reading, so that's usually pretty quick, but I did want to take a moment to respond to Board Member Lee's questions. He was asking about some of the evidence that we provided and helping clarify the evidence for the board. So I do want to just respond to your questions about the conflict of interest indicators and be known that I agree with Mr. Lee that providing the board the evidence to support that is really important for you, so you can quality check this new indicator in this policy. I do think it's very reasonable for us to provide a verification of how many designated staff have been asked to fill out a conflict of interest documentation. So I think that's something we should provide you as evidence when the report comes out again. What number or percent of those employees that completed that conflict of interest documentation we had to mitigate, and maybe even to the point of which ones identified their conflicts and provide a list to the board? I think that should be able to be seen by the board. If you ask for it, I mean, we can provide that to you. I would say probably not giving individual data at a board meeting, but I think behind the scenes, that's there. It's a public record, you can see it. But sharing with you in this record how many we had to navigate, I think helps you understand to what degree we're navigating or mitigating those conflicts, even the number that we're doing with that. And then what percent of staff have completed the training? Because the last indicator just talks about, we're going to try to raise everybody's level of awareness of what conflict of interest is and how to navigate it, prevent it, and address it. And so I think that's reasonable to provide you a training like we do with other things inside of coherent governance. We provide you with the number or percentage of staff that have completed training. So I do think that's very reasonable to your questions. They were very good last time and helped us go back and refine some of our thinking about how we're going to provide that evidence. So just thought you should know that before you consider second reading.
Thank you, Dr. Fosnot. So this is our second time considering these policy changes. Any comments on them? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Ms. Peterson.
Yeah, I would move to approve the revised coherent governance operational expectations policy, OE four, personnel administration, and the revised supporting indicators as presented for the second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Dr. Scher.
Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Preski.
Yes.
Eastgate.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes. Item C, Board Members' School Visits, and I know we have one. Mr. Lee.
I do have one, yes. Thank you, President Hager. So I had the pleasure of visiting Lincoln Elementary, home of the Lightning. Just always enjoy being out there. It's, you know, it's really our only school that kind of is surrounded by its own community. I suppose you could make a case for neighborhoods around elementary schools are a community as well, but this is an actual city that it's in, and it just has a different feel, and I think you'd all agree, you've all been out there. So up until this year, Lincoln was the largest elementary school in North Dakota, and even now it remains one of the largest. So the first thing you notice is this big, beautiful addition and no more portals, and it's just, it's a great look. There's a little bit of space to grow there. I'm not going to say a lot, but I know it's been very helpful to administrators out there that they've got this extra space, and it really does just look amazing. I would guess that even though population-wise it's not the largest, I think the footprint's got to be close to one of the largest in the states for an elementary. It's an expansive building, but it doesn't feel like that as you matriculate through the building with the wings and things, it just has a really, really, really good feel. It was well-designed, so. I met with Principal Missy Hurt and Assistant Principal Nikki Schaaf, and it was, I did that intentionally, I wanted Miss Schaaf to be there as well, and it was really great. I've heard this before, but it was great to see firsthand how well those two specifically worked together and worked together as a team. They complement each other extremely well, and they're, I can't emphasize this enough, their leadership and care for students and staff in that building are just, are very evident. It's palpable when you're in there. So I had the pleasure, we stopped into Mrs. Weiss's third-grade classroom, and what a treat that was. It's just always fun to get in those classrooms with those kids. Miss Weiss is a former Chamber EDC Primary Teacher of the Year. She had her students completely engaged in the lesson. I think it's by design that they brought me in there, right? But I'm happy they did, because it was incredible. The kids were focused, respectful, and clearly enjoying the learning. That was a great example of what effective teaching in a positive classroom culture looked like. It was really cool. We also talked about the new bell schedule and busing changes this year that, you know, going to say it took up a lot of my hour, but they had some great insights, and they felt while it took some adjustments, both administrators shared that the new schedule has made a big difference, especially with shorter wait times for buses at the end of the day. It was good to hear that. It's not perfect for everyone, and they attest to that. But overall, the feedback from staff and families in Lincoln anyways has been overwhelmingly positive. So after what we went through at the beginning of the year, it's really great to hear positive affirmations and things that are coming out of those bell times. Another highlight was hearing about Lincoln's strong relationship with Lincoln P D. So I asked about SROs and things. I know it's kind of changed out there over time. They do not specifically have an SRO dedicated right now. They've had a change at the P D. Their SRO left, and they don't have one filling that position yet, but they did say that as a school, they feel very supported and connected to local law enforcement. Safety and communication are clearly a shared priority between the two of them, and they couldn't say enough good things about their relationship with Lincoln P D. I think the power of an SRO, having an SRO is just that relationship building, right? Knowing the kids, knowing the families, that sort of thing. Smaller place like Lincoln, they probably already know a lot of the kids, a lot of families. I mean, it's kind of insulated out there, so it was really good to talk through that. And finally, it was inspiring to hear how excited the staff are about the new elementary curriculum and their continued focus on improving instruction. The other cool thing about Lincoln is many of the teachers, the paras, staff members, kitchen workers, custodians, bus drivers even, are also, they're also parents of students, which I think is kind of unique there. I dared about the percentage is much higher out there than any of our other elementaries. So it creates a real sense of community pride and investment. So that was, it was cool. It was just, it was a fantastic visit, and Lincoln is truly living up to its model. I should say Lincoln Elementary because this is Miss Hertz and Miss Schaaf's model, one percent better every day, which I thought was pretty cool. A big thank you to Mrs. Hurt and Mrs. Schaaf for taking the time to visit and share all the great things happening at Lincoln Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Great school visit.
President, yeah, oh, sorry, man. President Hager, if I may.
Yes, Ms. Eastgate.
I didn't report that I had a school visit, but I just wanted to touch on a couple other things. Mr. Lee, thank you for that great report, one percent better every day. Something we can all hold on to, that's for sure. Just a couple of things happening in the district, though, that I think are important to note, it's Indigenous Peoples' Day today, and just last month, our own Indigenous Education Department invited board members out to get to be a part of seeing some of our students dance when we had the Palo here in town last month. So I just wanted to point that out, that was just such a great deal. It's something that they're growing, they're looking to get into more feeder schools next year as well. It was really fun to get to celebrate some of our Indigenous students, and they had us out on the floor for an honoring dance at the end, and it was just fun seeing some of our central office, I know, was there, and just really proud of our department for doing that. Also, I just wanted to say a thank you to Century High hosted a three-on-three basketball tournament this weekend, and to Coach Mattern and to his entire staff for having in inclusive sports as well. They incorporated inclusive basketball right into the entire tournament, which I happened to be there most of the day because I had a son playing in the inclusive team as well as a son playing in the eighth-grade division. But if anybody has not been to an inclusive sporting event, we were always talking with some of the board members here at the beginning before the meeting got started, but every parent who has kids, there's no question that activities and sports are important to a lot of families in our district. And if you believe in youth sports and supporting it, go watch an inclusive sport. It is how every parent should coach and teach their kids to look at sports. And I say that because when you go and you watch, and anybody that is watching right now that was there, I guarantee you they're nodding, is that those kids play with an incredible amount of competitiveness. I was picking on Board Member Lee because his nephew, Riker Hindorff, was dominating yesterday, because he... yesterday, because he can shoot. But he was playing against some of his best buddies out on the court, and they went to overtime. And it's a do-or-die moment, you know, and he sure enough gave him a good little, as his dad said, maybe, maybe a little physical there at the end, but created some space and hit a three for the game winner. And his buddy, who we just scored on, just immediately started clapping for him, for the game win. And then all the gym just erupted. But I just want to say that that's really what activities are about. It's about being great competitors, and I think it's okay to want to win and to try to get that, but at the end of it, to still applaud each other and to have that good sportsmanship. So it's a great example, it was a great example for me as a parent. I hope my, you know, like I said, one of my sons was out there, but I hope they're all paying attention, because that's what we want to see in our kids. So I mainly just wanted to say thank you to the staff for putting that on, for Bismarck Public Schools, for Mrs. Borah for helping put that on, and that they have this vision for where we're going for activities in our district. It's a big deal. Dickinson, I thank you to Dickinson for coming out and partaking. They brought a whole busload of inclusive basketball teams yesterday. What a cool deal. So I just appreciate that our district, it's again one of those things that I'm just really proud of. So it's not a school visit per se, but I think this is a good moment to highlight some of these things. So thank you for the extra time, President Hager. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Eastgate. Ms. Peterson?
Yeah, thanks, Board Member Eastgate. And then to piggyback off that, I don't have a school visit, but I want to thank Dr. Scher and Dr. Fossnot for allowing us some professional development. Last week, there was the North Dakota School Boards Association, and several of us were in attendance to learn. But I also, even though this is like the school visit update, I just was really impressed by seeing how much Bismarck Public Schools was featured and in various presentations. So the first that actually had something to do with kind of when we talk about arts, we had our, you know, the National Anthem was sung by JoJo from Bismarck High. The Screaming Demons Jazz Band played the next day, you know, just as mourning, as a welcome. And then we had the Sterling Strings, who I know we have many of our students that partake in that. That was for some of the events. So that was really cool, just to see our kids featured. But not only just that, we had, Dr. Scher was helpful in not only helping at the gate to sign everybody in, but also presented and is definitely an expert in his field for the business managers. And on the other side, we had a school safety panel that was led by, it was a panel that was led by the School Boards Association, but it was, had an SRO from Legacy, and Assistant Principal Ryan Meal, and then also Becky Labella, our school safety coordinator. And I just really appreciated how they kind of talked about not only what they're doing in Bismarck, but how some of those practices could be done in various, maybe smaller institutions across the state. And then we had, you know, Board Member Lee, Dr. Fossnot, they talked about retention and recruitment using Vital Network. And then I think that just as, we had Board Member Eastgate served on a panel and talking just about kind of just board membership, and he served alongside two others. And so just, it was really something amazing to see all of the different ways that Bismarck could not only be a learner in those spaces, but also sharing the information. And then just to cap it out, Board Member Lee was awarded kind of an award for his service as, I think, a master board member. And so that was really nice to see him honored for all of the time that he spent, not only in the presidency, but in the role of a board member, but also just an active board member, because I don't think you just get that for serving. You also get it for the learning, that participating in those events, continuing to learn. So I thought that was really amazing as well. So thank you for the leadership, for allowing us to go and registering us, and then for the active engagement. And just thanks for everything and for Bismarck for being great.
Thanks, Ms. Peterson.
I might as well chime in on something, too. I went to state tennis in Grand Forks, and congratulations to Legacy head coach Scott McPherson. He was named the Boys Tennis Coach of the Year. And the team, Legacy team, took fifth in the team competition. And I am in no way an expert on tennis, but lots of Bismarck kids competing in the singles and the doubles. And I believe the only Bismarck team that was competing in the team division was Legacy. So good to see them get a plaque at the end of the day there.
Thank you. Ms. Preski. Dr. Scher?
Yeah, I just want the minutes reflected. It was master board member with distinction.
So corrected.
That was the gray hair.
Congratulations, Mr. Lee. With that, down to item seven, the consent agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
I'd move approval of the consent agenda. With one comment, please, if I may?
Sure.
Steve Feeney's resignation's on here. He was someone I grew up with, opposite sides of the town. He was Dorothy Moses. I was Northridge. He was Walker. I was Hughes. He was Bismarck High. I was BHS by that time. I moved to Botno High School. But even in high school, I competed against him in the javelin. Saw him a lot as NDSU played UND and football in college. But he's also been a teacher for all of my kids. I think he said thirty-two years in BPS, but much longer than that. Of course, his dad was a legendary coach, Bob Feeney. Just a remarkable career. Had some health issues. I just want to thank him for his service and wish him health and happiness. He's also my neighbor in the many years to come. Just a great career with BPS, and I'd be remiss if I didn't notice that.
Well said, Mr. Lee. We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Dr. Scher?
Peterson?
Yes.
Preski?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes. Item eight, superintendent's report. Dr. Fossnot?
We're going to make this even quicker, because several of the nice items, I was going to tack on to the bottom of the agenda. You guys just knocked them all out, so quicken this up. First thing is, and if we have the slides for that, Mr. Barnhart, I wanted to give a little information to you and the community about our strategic facilities plan update. We're just starting this work next week across the district, and I just wanted to help inform everybody. I provided a QR code if people are watching, if they can pause their TV or what, snippet, with their camera, take a look at it. The plan has been in place for quite some time, but we just realized through Operational Excellence that needs a refresh, it needs updating, as Board Member Eastgate mentioned earlier. So we just, Operational Excellence thought we should have an intentional process to get out to key schools that are really big needs as far as facilities in our district, and talk to stakeholders, staff members, parents, people closer to the school to make sure we're seeing the needs. So what we've done on the next slide is we're going to focus on three areas, and first of all, getting the right stakeholders at the table, engaging with them, having them review the present plan, and just look at it with the second questions in their mind. Does the plan, present plan address the facility needs you see within your child's school? Like, we've identified programmatic needs in schools that need some additional equity work, maybe between the schools, where they're not up to the same standard as we'd have across the other schools in the district, but also some deferred maintenance. And we've ranked those deferred maintenance kind of at the critical end, all the way down to what'd be nice to have, but we don't need to have. And we just want to review that with the stakeholders in the building and say, are you seeing the same thing? Do you see something we don't see? To make sure it's included or excluded from the list and have that dialogue. We also want to ask, based on those items, are we prioritizing them right? Because something we see as, oh, it could wait till later. Maybe the parents in there say, nope, that's a, we need to get this fixed. This is a major problem, that fence condition, or maybe the HVAC's not working to what you think. Okay, we're going to want your voice to see where they're prioritized. And then the programmatic needs, again, just to ask the staff and the parents in there is like, do you see this gap as well? The evolution of schools has changed. What schools do and what we're asked to do has changed. Some of the instructional areas in some of our schools have been adapted for other needs, as we've talked about multiple times, student support services, or the learning or behavioral needs of our kids. So we just want to have that conversation. Do those things seem to be meeting what you think your kid's school should be doing for you? And then that information will be gathered and then given back to our Operational Excellence to say, here's the revisions we want to see come forward inside of our facility plan. And on the last slide, we're listing the locations we're going to be in the next month. These are, again, really schools that have a long list of deferred maintenance or have a programmatic project that kind of pre-identified or identified in those. And again, those are in the previous plan. We're just bringing them forth. And so we want to make sure to get to Grimshut, that has some significant deferred maintenance projects and programmatic projects. Myrie, a lot of these, you'll notice, are downtown schools. There are center-town schools that need a lift. If you have the privilege of entering those schools and then being able to enter one of our newer schools on the edges of town, I'm just going to tell you, they don't match. There is a discrepancy in what those schools' conditions are like and keeping them all up to, I think, what we say is the BPS standard. The starred items at Century, Bismarck, and Simili are designed to be feeder meetings. So if you're a parent in the feeder, maybe your school's not listed on here, but you want to have a meeting where you can see all the schools represented in your feeder, we'll have information for all the schools, not just the specific school we have identified. So that way, you can not only hear about Bismarck High School, but you can hear about the middle school and the elementary schools within the Bismarck High feeder. And so again, they're going to be very informal. I don't think, board members aren't intended to be present. I don't think anybody has said you're going to be present. It's really going to be the principal, myself, Dr. Scher, just again, having a very informal meeting with parents and stakeholders to see if the plan's hitting the mark, you might say. So again, just wanted to share that for everybody, so you know those are coming. We should have had a social media post last week on that to help inform parents. This week, we'll be sending messages directly to those schools, like a week out, so parents are getting a direct message, this meeting's happening, along with social media, so people can keep on top of it. So. And if they don't hit the one that's their school, and they want to hit another one that's close, particularly the feeder meetings, they could go to the feeder meeting and catch up what's happening at their school. So, any questions? Okay. I wanted to give you a quick transportation update. We met with Transpar two weeks ago. We met with them last week in person here. They're the company that did our route analysis leading up to the recommendations. They've come back to do a yield, a route yield analysis. They were writing routes, visiting stops, and the intent is they are going to redo that route analysis again, see where we've missed the mark or hit the mark, and then give us a summary report on that in the future. We want to take that information and roll that into November, where the intent is we're going to be gathering stakeholder input again from parents, staff, roll that all together. So by December, early January, we can give you a recommendation of where we think bell times and transportation recommendations for upcoming school year, because we need to do that pretty soon. So it's all kind of continuing to roll. We haven't left that out of many working meetings for a while, so we continue to talk about transportation bell time. And I guess I was going to mention the convention. Thank you, Ms. Peterson, for taking my thunder on that. But it was a good convention. I actually went up to the School Board Association Executive Director, Mr. Cook, and just thanked her. Thanked her for recognizing the many good things we have going on in BPS and using that to help build up other school board members across the state, but then just showcasing our kids, showcasing our kids' talent. That's always really good. And lastly, and again, thank you for stealing my thunder on Indigenous Day.
You're welcome.
But I don't think officially at a board meeting, I've provided congratulations to two entities that really proud of the work they're doing to help support our Indigenous students. And we were informed at the end of last month, September, that Region Five for Johnson O'Malley, Johnson O'Malley's federal funding that goes to schools with the high Indigenous populations, we have a partnership with Standing Rock to receive those funds. Region Five is our Upper Plains part of the country that administers Johnson O'Malley funds. Each year, they select a program of the year, kind of a district of the year, you might say, and then a teacher of the year. And this year, they selected Bismarck Public Schools Indigenous Ed Program as the program of the year. So that's, we're really proud of that work that they've done, and Mrs. Simorasty and her team. But then also, we are fortunate enough to have Mr. Donovan Lambert selected as JOM, just Region Five Teacher of the Year. And that's even better. If you know Mr. Lambert, he's top-notch. He's a top-notch person for our kids, all kids, and does a good job of supporting all of our kids in our district. And I'm really proud of him and the work that they've done. So that concludes my remarks, unless you have anything else you'd like to question me on.
Thanks, Dr. Fossnot. Donovan is, he is great.
He's top-notch.
So just back to the transportation update. Your information that you've gathered from Transpar, do you see, like, did they give you any information on anything that can be quickly changed for as we move into winter? Or is that something that your team is still evaluating?
Thank you. No, they didn't give us anything at the instant. They were here to look. They're here to watch. They're here to record. And then they went back to their offices, and we'll get a summary report from that. Thank you for the reminder. We are having F and T staff right now. They have been for several weeks and continue to drive all routes. So not all in-town routes, but the rural routes. We've been driving all the rural routes, using that criteria I shared with you, I think in September, to evaluate all those rural stops and then make changes as necessary. So I think it was just good due process to check ourselves, to put eyes and tires on each of those routes to make sure we're doing the best we can before winter started. So that's in process right now.
I think it would be good to get some sort of follow-up update on, you know, from yourself or F and T on just what some of those changes have been, just especially as we go into winter, or just some sort of summary report.
Yeah, let me think of how to do that. I would tell you, we were making a lot of adjustments and considerations in August that we probably didn't record well, because we were just making them on the fly, helping people. Since the first to second week in September, that's really slowed down. We've had, I think we've, I've helped a few parents, and I can, let me ask Mr. Schaefer if we could have some way of capturing that to provide you some feedback on that.
Thank you, Dr. Fossnot. All agenda items have been considered. I declare this meeting adjourned.